All right, ladies and gentlemen. Can I thank you all very much. And I apologise for ringing the bell a little bit early. But as we're webcasting, we felt we shouldn't start until two o'clock. I welcome you all to this special County Council meeting today. And I will start with apologies. And I have apologies from councillors Brazil, Brook, Beederman, Connet, Hall, Hartnell, Henderson, Hodgson, Khan, Letch, Moorish, Sanders, Wrigley and Room. And councillor Cox has announced he's likely to be late. Do I have any other apologies to be noted?
Christine Channan.
Right. Councillor Channan. Councillor Dewhurst. And councillor Barnes. Okay, anybody else? No? Okay. I'll do what I've always done, even though it's a special meeting. Declarations of interest. Does anybody have any declarations of interest they wish to announce now? And I'm going to ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to outline the positions of councillors in relation to this meeting. Maria.
Thank you, Chair. So this matter has been brought to full council prior to responding to government's invitation to submit the council's interim plan illustrating the progress to date. You are not being asked to recommend a formal proposal. A formal proposal within our constitution would be an executive decision. Formal proposals have been requested at a later date in the year and are expected in November. I would remind all members that you have a dispensation to permit you to speak and vote in this debate, but reiterate that you are not being asked to support any specific proposals for reorganisation today. The general dispensation covers memberships of other authorities. The only exception is where the issue is a matter of dispute between the county council and another authority, and that matter would affect the financial position of that other authority. The county councillor may speak in such instances on the matter, but then withdraw from the meeting room. If you represent this council on another body or are a member of another council or authority, I reiterate that you are not being asked to support any proposals relating to other authorities. You are receiving the interim plan and progress completed to date. As such, you need not declare personal interest. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Can I say I congratulate people for uncovering the windows? It's so much brighter in this place today. I can see everybody. Right, Chair's announcements, I'll make the same ones I do in the past. If you wish to speak, please catch my eye. Contribution should be added to the debate and not repeated as what has already been said. Members are asked to turn off sound functions on their laptops during council meeting. The pings and notification noises can be quite distracting, and additional background noise makes listening difficult. Please use the microphone on your left. I note that we have a managed solution in the chamber today. And remind the public that the officers and members may be using laptops and tablets to access the papers for the meeting. And I remind everyone in the chamber today that this council signed up to the LGA debates, not hate campaign. Whilst debating and disagreeing with one another is a healthy part of democracy, there can be a fine line between robust challenge and unacceptable discourse. It is the right of engagement that matters. If it is necessary to do so, I will call out any insensitive or ill-chosen language or inappropriate tone that I hear in the chamber. And remember that I have a switch to turn you off, but I trust that won't be required. And I'll put the rider on that I put last time. If somebody is speaking, please remember, if somebody near you is speaking, please remember that you're also on camera. So please try and look forward, concentrate on what's going on. Don't do things that look as if you're either disinterested or not really concerned with what's going on. Okay, items requiring urgent attention, item four, I have none. I have petitions, questions and representatives from the public. I have no notification of any. Does anybody have any? No? Thank you. There are no questions from the general public, but I have two questions from item six, members of council. Could I have the first question comes from councillor Whitten, involving the involvement of Boundary Commission. You have had a written answer, councillor Whitten, do you have a supplementary?
I do, thank you. Leader, thank you for your answer, which I note is not answered the question I asked. If you read my question, I asked whether the Boundary Commission would be involved, according to your understanding, if a unitary authority boundary was based on ward boundaries instead of district boundaries. I think we are all aware that the Boundary Commission would be involved if there was a change in boundaries. And I do not feel you have answered that question. But if I may go on to a supplementary, I would assume, Leader, that you are aware that some 2,000 homes have been constructed on Exeter's South West Boundary. And four of the five proposals that have been included in this paper today, those would be outside Exeter's boundary, although those residents clearly shop in Exeter, work in Exeter, go to school in Exeter and believe they are part of Exeter. Can I ask therefore how that is considered to be a sensible geography or sensible economic area in those circumstances? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McInnes.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Whitten. Firstly, in terms of boundary reviews etc., we have had some legal advice, and our legal advice is saying that the minister has certain powers, but we're not sure that he's got the powers to actually do what is being proposed outside district area boundaries. So I've not been evasive, I simply don't know. Secondly, in terms of the housing that is just outside the boundary of Exeter City Council, that's outside the boundary of Exeter City Council. That is the reality of the situation. And we, as we will no doubt debate once we get into the paper that we're going to submit to government, are following government guidance in terms of how we actually look at constructing possible unitaries going forward, and we were asked to construct them on district boundaries, and that's what we've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question number two is from councillor Adams. Again, you've had a supplementary question, do you have a supplementary, sorry, you've had an answer, do you want a supplementary question?
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor McInnes, for your answer and for making it clear, I believe, that the wording you've used wasn't actually in the original text. Do you acknowledge that your paraphrase has misrepresented the ministerial guidance? And would you be happy to apologise for this and rectify the wording now? And acknowledge that at least is an inaccurate assessment and that authorities less than 500,000 can be considered, and that is in the ministerial criteria that is included in the pack?
Councillor McInnes.
Thank you very much for your additional questions, and I have nothing to apologise for or to retract. The government guidance was quite clear that overall they expected new unitaries to be created, to be 500,000 upwards. There is talk of exceptional circumstances, and I know lots of discussions have taken place in darkened rooms with ministers etc. But as far as the guidance has actually been sent to us on black and white, I'm quite content with what's in the paper. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now move to item seven on the agenda, which is the local government reorganisation interim plan. And there is one decision that requires the approval of the council today as set out in the agenda. Before I open the debate, I would like to remind members of the usual process on amendments. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at a time. I will call upon councillor McInnes to formally move the adoption of the recommendation as outlined in the report and ask if there is a second. I will then open the debate and the usual rules of debate apply. I will now call upon councillor McInnes to formally move the adoption of the recommendation as outlined in the report relating to local government reorganisation and to formally present the item. Councillor McInnes.
Good afternoon, members. Isn't it wonderful to be here on a sunny day? And I must say that the blinds have been opened at the back to transform this chamber, because it was getting very dark. And also just to say to you, I don't know if you know, it's World Happiness Day. So I all think, I hope it's World Happiness Day and the sun's shining and it's the equinox today, you know, only things can only get better. So we were here on the 9th of January, and we had a good debate about the government's proposals for local government review in Devon. On the 5th of February, we actually received the letter from the minister setting out the criteria that we should be putting together and the timetable. And part of the timetable was that we as a council need to put in our workings to date by the 21st of March. Now, things have moved quite a lot since the 5th of February. On the 5th of February, it gave us the impression we would have to put in a defined proposal. Since then, it's become quite clear, talking to ministers and being on various webinars etc. In fact, you can see in the pack that we actually wrote, I actually wrote to the minister with some questions, and one of the key questions was, is the 21st of March a decision point? And his clear reply was, it is not. So we, both the Cabinet and with officers, made the decision that we need to put down on the 21st of March, a platform that we can actually build on going forward, that actually looks seriously at local government review across Devon. It looks at how we're going to actually deliver our services to residents. And after all, that's what we're supposed to be here for, not about plotting in the background about what size and shape a unitary authority is going to be, but how are we going to deliver good quality services to residents going forward. And another key issue, of course, is that whatever we put forward needs to be sustainable, because we know we've had stripping out of money out of local government since 2010, and we're down to the bone right across local government in Devon. We can't go on like we are. So actually having this opportunity, which I fully support, to actually look at a unitary solution for Devon gives us the opportunity to make it sustainable for the future. Now, at this point, I just would like to thank the chief executive and officers across the county council for all the work that they've put into this. There's a group of senior officers who've actually set aside a certain proportion of their week to concentrate on LGR, and you can tell by the quality of the interim plan that we're sending to government, the amount of work that has gone on. And I'd like to thank you on behalf of the members for that work. You know what it is in local government, you deal with the budget, you deal with the things that come out of the blue, and then there's something else that you have to adjust to deal with, and I think we've adjusted pretty well. Over the last six weeks, we've been very strongly engaged with our partners. I myself and the chief executive have had individual meetings with the district council leaders and chief executives. We've met with most of our members of parliament. We've met with lots of business groups, we've met with the community voluntary sector, a whole myriad of people, about 60 different meetings have actually taken place in terms of engagement. We've also been having the advice of some people who know all about local government, and also we've had some legal advice, and I'd be quite upfront about that before I get asked a question about it, because the minister in actually bringing forward this proposal for unitary government across Devon obviously has various powers, and we want to know what they are. And it's a very grey area, it's really very interesting. But it isn't defined, and it'll only be defined through the process. So for me and for the Cabinet, the key issue is that we have, after we received our letter, an election here on the 1st of May, and I'm sure many of you are out there delivering leaflets knocking on doors already. So we want to make sure that what we decide today can be picked up by whoever gets elected to this chamber on the 1st of May. I think that's really important. And what we put before you today needs to be something we can build on. And I'm sure you've all read the papers, but if you actually look through the papers, one of the key things is actually how we base whatever solution we come up with in the future. We base it on proper evidence, statistics, because we need to know exactly how services are being delivered across Devon, how much they're costing, where the actual groups, perhaps of, perhaps one particular area of Devon has more children in care, or has more elderly people, or people of adult age who are suffering from disability. All that needs to be factored in to what we actually put together as a final solution on the 28th of November. That is why you've got five scenarios in this paper. None of them are preferred, they all have equal status, and you actually have the overall map of Devon, Torbay and Plymouth as a starting point to work from. I have to say that I have heard at some district councils' special meetings this week, them saying that the county council is refusing to share data. Well, I would say publicly to you today and anybody else who happens to be listening online, that is incorrect. We're working with our district councils. In fact, the chief executives and the 151 officers have actually met on a couple of occasions, and the 151 officers across local governments in Devon have agreed to continue to meet regularly so that we can actually put together a block of statistics and data that we all agree is true and above board, and we can all use in whatever solutions we tend to put to government in November of this year. And that is the truth. So anyone who tells you that the county council is not sharing data is bending the truth. Now, the reason we haven't got the data yet, and the reason why we haven't been able to put it towards any of these specific options in front of you today, is because our data isn't just cut up nicely to use instantly in terms of aggregation, disaggregation. So there are two companies, Pixels and, yeah, I knew it, I never remember the other one. Newton Europe, who are putting together data, Newton Europe is more to do with people's services, children, adults, health, and Pixel is more to do with general data across local authorities. They're busy modelling, and it's independently done, we're not gerrymandering it, and the 151 officers across the local authorities in Devon are working with them to make sure they're all happy with the data. And once that is available, that will go out to anyone who wants to use it, regardless of what option they're going for. So we're all speaking from the same hymn sheet. Because for me, if you actually look around the country and you actually see the number of areas that have gone unitary in recent years, it's been a bit of a disaster. In fact, in the recent budget round, where government has actually put in millions, tens of millions of pounds into some local authorities to prop them up, and many of those are ones that have recently gone unitary. So what we need to do here in Devon, not only Devon County Council, but the districts, Plymouth and Torbay, is actually make sure the proposals we put to government are absolutely sound financially. We can't go around promising things that we cannot deliver. And one thing all local authorities in Devon are agreed on, there's not masses of savings to be found in local government. There are efficiencies. There are efficiencies in the way housing works and adult social care. There are efficiencies in the way health works. There are efficiencies perhaps in actually having a more uniform waste collection across parts of Devon. There are a whole lot of efficiencies, but there are not savings. And we, and I believe are there other local authorities in Devon, are going to be absolutely clear to government that if you think you're going to find lots of savings, you're kidding yourself. Because, I'm going to repeat myself again, we're here to decide on the future of local government in Devon in November. We need to make sure that it is financially sustainable, it is actually able to deliver services to residents across Devon, regardless of what unitary they end up in. And so, Chair, I'm very pleased to actually propose what's in front of us, the recommendations to note the approach taken to develop in response to the government's invitation to submit the interim plan to local government reorganisation in Devon and supports. I hope you will support me as leader in being able to do that. And so I'm happy to move the recommendations. Thank you.
And thank you, Leader. Do I have a second for that?
Chair, I'm very happy to second.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's been proposed and it's been seconded. So now I ask for speakers to wish to speak. Do I have any speakers? Okay, councillor Thomas first.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Leader. I echo the remarks you made about thanking the officer group for all the work that's gone into this document, and I thank the Cabinet as well. I was delighted to read the final report we have at this stage, because it very clearly thinks about what's best for the people of Devon, which is why we're all here. There are options that will suit different interests across different areas, but it's very clear that all areas are being considered. And I have to say, that isn't the case everywhere. I represent an area that is suffering at the moment from what looks to me like a fairly shabby land grab, as one authority looks to take what it sees as the best part of another authority, a part that has large numbers of maybe higher rated council tax houses perhaps, or an area that has industrial estates, areas that have good business rates that it can take in for itself. But in so doing, it doesn't think about what's good for the rest of Devon. It only thinks about what's good for itself. And I think that's really unfortunate. And so, Leader, I commend this document for the fact that it does what it should do from Devon County Council, which is to think about what's best for everybody in the county. If you go through those options, no one place is neglected, because wherever you are in the county, you are in with someone else who can provide you with the economic sustainability that you need, I would argue. And that's what we need. We don't see that in the bids necessarily provided by other places, which I think is disappointing. My biggest concern though, Leader, is of course what this will cost. And my public statement on that would be that if the government are so keen on us to do this, then perhaps they should be paying for it, rather than expecting the people of Devon to pay. There'll be plenty of other people who want to speak, so I'll leave it at that. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much. As her hands went up, councillor Atkinson, then councillor Bailey, then councillor Lea. Atkinson first.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I and my party won't be supporting the recommendation today for the very good reason that it doesn't include a sixth option based on Greater Exeter. And nowhere, despite what councillor McInnes says, nowhere in the guidance does it say that the option to be put forward need to be based on existing district council boundaries, and nowhere does it say it has to be 500,000 plus, as has been already raised by my colleague with you earlier on. This council has long, ever since I've been on this council, recognised Greater Exeter. It supported the Greater Exeter strategic plan, which recognised that Exeter was the functioning geographic area. functioning geographic area which reflected travel to work, housing and economic activity in this particular area. So I'm trying to get away from the echo. So I take issue that this could not have been put into it. Also, this council supported the Exeter Local Transport Plan, which also recognised the travel to work area. That has not been included in any of these options. Not only that, you've already heard that Teanbridge District Council, despite the fact it wasn't in its local plan, put two thousand houses on the boundary of my division, basically about two metres from it. Excuse me, are you laughing?
Sorry, no, I'm just talking to the...
Fine, thank you. Just a bit fed up of the Liberal Democrats laughing every time I stand up to speak. Thank you.
May I have concentration, please?
Yes, thank you. And this council, because of that planning development, had to apply for infrastructure funds from government to facilitate that development. And what is that called? And you can go on it, it's called South West Exeter. It's not called North East Teanbridge, it's called South West Exeter. And all those houses that have been built there are marketed, not as come to Newton Abbot, marketed as come and live in Alphington. So it's absolutely ludicrous that those, the boundaries upon which these options are made do not recognise the geography and the identity of the people who live around Exeter and in particular on the boundary of my borders of my division and I'm sure that's true for Pinho as well and I'm sure you'll hear from councillor Adams on that as well, they all think they live in Exeter. So we have got not one single option here which acknowledges a Greater Exeter and the identities of those people and the geographies. So I am led to believe that these options for you are politically driven rather than sensible geographical options which would reflect the feelings and identities of the people. Ask anyone in Barnsworth if they think they live in North West Exeter. I also take issue with what councillor McInnes says, he was saying, oh, you know, there's no, you know, we've got to be careful of efficiencies and loads of them have failed. Well, if you go onto the ONS website, it's got a whole thing about local government reorganisation, which started nineteen ninety five with the Isle of Wight, nineteen ninety six, three unitary authorities, nineteen ninety seven, eleven unitary authorities, nineteen ninety eight, twenty one were created unitaries, two thousand and nine, another nine, two thousand and nineteen, two, two thousand and twenty, another one, twenty one, two were created and so on. This process that we're going through now is a continuation of that movement to make efficiencies in local government that's been going on. And this is a sweeping up exercise to make sense of local government. Therefore, the criticisms that have been levelled that it's not worth doing or whatever, not sensible to do, I would really contest. And I do take issue with my colleagues here and the Lib Dems. We know that they have promoted an options which, as far as I can see, best suit gerrymandering for their vote. And for these reasons that I've said, I won't be voting for any of these options. Thank you.
Thank you very... We are timing people even though the clock I don't think is working at the moment. You were in time. Well done. Councillor Bailey next.
Thank you very much. Oh, gosh, that sucks. Well, I think my colleagues who've spoken before me have highlighted the concerns that I have, that this is actually going to end up with, well, it's basically opened a massive can of worms, hasn't it? With everybody concerned about their boundaries and land grabs and how it's all going to work out. And my concern as well as that is around the cost and I'm not just talking about the cost of the, in future terms, but the cost to our residents now whilst our senior officers, as well as trying to do their day job, are spending their time having to work on this. And we've heard from councillor McInnes that our officers are spending a certain proportion of their week on this work. And I think it's really important and I would request that our senior officers record how much time they're spending. We need to know what, how many hours of tax funded time, senior officer time, is actually devoted to this pet project of the Labour Government. And I would also like to know, please, we've instructed by all accounts, I don't know whether it's internal or external legal advice, but if it's external, I'd like to know what we're spending on that, what we're spending on Pixel funding, Pixel consultants and what we're spending on Newton Europe as well. Because I think that actually this, I don't have a particular issue with the report but I am concerned that all the energy and time from our officers and our council is not being devoted to our residents, it's being devoted to this project. And I also have, do have one particular issue with the report and the executive summary talks about, and let me just find it, it talks about local accountability will be strengthened with decisions being made closer to communities. I just really cannot see that that's happening. I really cannot see by destroying the districts, you're going to improve local accountability. So I would just ask that when we make statements in our executive summaries as Devon County Council, we make absolutely sure that we're being accurate and aren't just repeating what the government says. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lever and then councillor Trell.
Thank you, chair. Gosh, so where are we coming from on this? Well, we start from the position that probably none of us would have chosen to be talking about this, that actually we've got enough challenges as councils going forward, actually delivering services to the people of Devon. And the, you know, over a decade of increasingly difficult financial settlements for councils across the country actually has not made this job any easier. Our budget book and the decisions we made not long ago about the budget for next year highlights how difficult the financial situation is. So, but this is what we've got in front of us and in responding to what the government has laid down, I also commend officers both at county but also at districts as well and at Exeter City Council and Plymouth and Torbay for the work that they've been doing to move forward with this, to come up with credible plans. Now, what is really important and colleagues have mentioned this, is that actually these plans need to work across the whole of the geography of Devon. Now, I don't consider myself to be in North West Exeter, I consider myself to be part of Devon with Exeter as part of the travel to work area in which I live up in North Devon, as indeed with many of the residents in my area. And I think that what I would, I'd like to reflect is that the work that's happened with leaders, section one five one officers, the chief executives from the districts as well, has been really helpful in looking at what models could work, given the information that we have had from government. Now, I point you to page fifteen of the report here where very clearly this is the criteria for unitary local government, two A. As a guiding principle, new councils should aim for a population of five hundred thousand or more. And then we move on to page seventeen, boundary changes, has it got a number? It's under, top of page seventeen. Existing district areas should be considered, the building, excuse me, the building blocks for your proposals. So I think it's really clear what government has set out. There may be some flexibility about that but we have not yet been told that. So we don't want to, we can't second guess that, we're not the government, we are local government. I do move on to cost and I look at the different models going forward. And I think what's really clear to me is not only the cost of the officers' time going into this already, as has been mentioned by councillor Bailey, and I think it's a great suggestion to actually quantify that, but also thinking about what the cost of any reorganisation when that is finally agreed, where that cost will come from. It will come from council taxpayers. We haven't, we're not getting any money from government, we've been told there may be some help, but you know, there's nothing concrete set down. So we know that this process is going to result in there being less money available for councils, whatever that end shape looks like being, that the money that is going to be cost, is going to be spent in doing the reorganisation, will be coming out of councils' coffers or out of revenue budgets. It may well have an impact on service delivery. Surely that's not what we want, but this is where we're going. Government has set this out really, excuse me, very clearly. And I think if we look at recent, I think it was only on Monday this week that the Chartered Institute for Public Finance and Accountancy, or SIPFA, has been looking at all of the councils that have been turned into unitaries in recent years. And what it clearly talks about is in, for example, the case of Somerset County Council, which became Somerset Council, is that the new council, the new unitary authority, actually inherited some considerable financial difficulties. It looks at, excuse me, the case not having been made financially, that the new council has been saddled with this and after six years of the decisions of the Conservative-run county council in Somerset, the new authority, which is run by the Liberal Democrats, has been saddled with under, with a, well, what's the phrase here? It talks about poor decision making in previous, the previous administration of the county council. Now, we don't want that here. What we want here is for us to come to a model where we can have the best that we can get for all of Devon. District councils have worked together hard and with the exception of one, have come, have looked at the various different options based on the small amount of information we have had from government thus far. And all of them, I think Southampton's meeting actually at the same time right now, so I can't...
Almost out of time, councillor.
Okay, I'm just trying to wind up. But I bet that the agreement thus far that has been reached and consensus is something that we should be seeking here, is actually option five in this report is one which is most favoured. Now, it may well be that with more information coming forward and with greater clarity from government, that may change, but that's where we are currently. I will be supporting this but on the basis that we need to be seeking consensus and we need to be getting the best for the whole of Devon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Trell. Before you start, councillor Hannaford, have you got a red light on or something else? Are you asking to speak? Thank you, that's better. Councillor Trell.
Thank you very much, chair, leader, council members, members of the public. I thank the members, the cabinet and officers for your paper. Fifty-three years ago, I arrived in Devon at the gates of the Commando Training Centre for Marines as one of the troop of fifty-five young men who had run from Exton Railway Station with suitcase and kit bags to CTC. We were halted by an instructor at the gate and were informed, this is where your life challenge begins. If you are able to achieve your aims and ambition, you will all need to work as one. If not, you will fall by the wayside. Now, fifty-three years later, along with the whole of Devon, we face a massive challenge to keep the Shire of Devon as one Devon. You, me, the people of Devon, to keep our services, NHS, health and wellbeing, children's education and all the other services as one. We need to put politics aside, parish, town, district, authority, council, councils, to work as one Devon. The government has forced our arm. We will only get one chance to make it work. Therefore, I say, the people of Devon, before politics, one Devon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Adams, then I'll take councillor Justice.
Thank you. And I want to say again, thank you to officers for all their work. I may not be voting for this today but that doesn't mean I don't appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this and the thought that's gone into all the paperwork. I also want to thank councillor McInnes for actually supporting devolution. And I just want to make it clear that those of us who perhaps don't agree with this, doesn't mean we aren't concerned about the people of Devon, doesn't mean we're not concerned or that we're driven by political reasons. There may be other reasons behind our thought processes which are valid and worth bringing here today. I am disappointed that Exeter, or Greater Exeter, option is not included in the papers today. And I think really it exemplifies some of the issues we have in Devon. And, you know, some of you, some councillors are in districts where you're a long way from Exeter, you perhaps don't come to Exeter very often, you're perhaps not understanding the very urban challenges that we have in Exeter. And I just really want to make that clear that, you know, I'm in a division where I have housing on the side of my district, my division, where people think they belong to Exeter. Councillor Atkinson has the same issue and it's very frustrating to be, all this cross-division, cross-authority issues that we have to deal with, do with housing, transport. The amount of emails I get where people don't know where they belong, where their identity is. I've stood in this chamber and listened to farmers talk quite passionately about their rural issues. I've listened to some very passionate, which I fully understand, rural issues, coastal issues, but they're not my experience, they're not my, my residents' identity. Their identity is part of a dynamic urban city that wants economic, push forward for economic change, that's got a university, that is pro-housing. You know, if a lot of, some of the divisions that are here, the districts are here, were so pro-housing, why are they not built in Sidmouth? Why are they not built on the edges of Tavistock? They're built on the edges of Exeter because we are, this is an area, an urban area that is growing and it's important to recognise that identity. So yes, we are all part of Devon but we don't always, in this chamber, we've been very clear that we have different views of what living in Devon is all about. And I feel that these papers do not represent that. I think one of the things that is really clear, that councillor Atkinson's talked about, the whole, you know, the Exminster, the Teanbridge, the edge of my division, Westcliss, it's very confusing when we cannot deliver what people want on roads, on transport, when there's this, it's fragmented. So I really want to make that clear so that those of you who don't live in our city, the city of Exeter, can understand where we're coming from, that it is not just about politics, it's about clarity, streamlining. And I also would say, I think there's a real opportunity here, if there was an option, which there isn't today, for a Greater Exeter, where we could focus on those issues, for rural and coastal areas, to really focus on things that matter to them, such as the railway from Oakhampton to Tavistock, such as applying for funding to improve our market towns. To say, I don't see that I am anti-Devon by wanting a different model to the ones that are here, I want a more coherent one. And that is, you may not agree with me and I fully accept that, but that is my position. And I really take offence to people who think that I am, that we are pulling some sort of political trick here. It is a lived experience for me all the time of, you know, why, you know, where's the infrastructure, you know, we've got all this housing in East Devon, where's, and I am powerless to be involved in any of that because of the way in which Exeter has grown and the districts, there's no... there's no uniformity and clarity. And I, I also, I have a great deal of respect for councillor Bailey, but I do take exception to some of the things she said. The whole point of reorganisation is to make clarity. You're investing in something to make things simpler, clearer, more streamlined. What is the option? We sit in aspic like this? Where is the ambition and the creativity to just sit the way we are?
You're getting to the end of time.
Thank you. So I hope that I've explained the reasons why I can't support the papers we have today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Chesterton, and then councillor Sarah Randall-Johnson.
Hello, yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I definitely welcome the paper we've got today, I'm pleased to see that it leaves some options on the table. Not all the information is there, it's impossible to come to a decision yet. In my own mind, I don't know what's best for Devon, I've got a very open mind as to see which ways forward, whether it's one with the whole of Devon, or whether it's one where Devon is broken up into, into parts. I have to say though, I have a lot of sympathy for the arguments being put forward by members in Exeter about how you split the district, the county up, should it need to come to that. The building blocks of using the districts, which I know is the directive from the minister, seems to be very arbitrary. Most of the districts were set up in the, in the 70s, when things looked very different, the sizes of our main conurbations looked very different. And I think there's a strong argument for doing things a different way, and certainly, I sat for quite a while on the Greater Exeter Strategic Board when, when it was there. I remember all the arguments about the growth of Exeter and the importance of Exeter as a hub, as a hub city, and a lot of that growth is focused on the south-west side and in Teanbridge. And I think the arguments for maintaining the links between Exeter and certainly that northern part of Teanbridge are very strong. I don't know the southern part of Teanbridge well enough to know where the appropriate thing is, but I, I would welcome an opportunity to be able to divide the county up in a different way, should the ministers allow us to, once we start going through this process. I think we need to recognise that the districts are not necessarily, have all got the right boundaries now, and we need to look at that. I also think it's very important that whatever, whatever council is here after the elections looks at the public, and there is proper public consultation on this. I'm not certain quite in this process how the public are going to be properly consulted. It feels like one of the reasons for keeping the districts as the building blocks is to avoid some of this public consultation that needs to happen, and I, Plymouth are trying to engage in public consultation in the southern end of, of our county, and have made their, their ideas clear. But I do think that it is very important that we manage to have a pause in the process to allow some proper public consultation at some point. There's a very tight timeline, but I hope whoever is the new council, come the 1st of May, take that on board, and make sure the public are fully engaged in the conversation that we're having and understand some of the issues, and that the building blocks are smaller than just the districts.
Thank you. Councillor Randall-Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I start with a question, please? Page 37 of the report, option two, regarding the map and the written words, there is some confusion. Could I ask, are we talking about green and blue being superimposed on one another? And if we're going to submit this paper to government, we need to make sure that this is in the right way round. I'm getting a positive nod from the chief exec, and I support her in her wearing of green today, supporting Devon. What I'm not hearing from some members in this chamber is that we are here as Devon county councillors, whilst we might actually are here to support our own divisions, we are here more importantly to represent the whole of Devon. And on that particular point, municipal boundaries are completely and utterly irrelevant to the public. They don't know where they are. You all do, because it matters where your vote comes from, you will know it down to the last inch. But if we were to have a Devon-wide, as councillor Jeff Treel mentioned, the Shire of Devon, Devonshire, I see myself as Devonshire. Where would, where is the boundary when you step into Upper Lyme and Lyme Regis? Where is it when you go from North Devon or Torridge into either Somerset or into Cornwall? These boundaries are irrelevant. What really matters is about how we have the drive and desire to deliver for the local people. I am incredibly frustrated to hear from both councillors Atkinson and Adams in their missing the point completely. If Exeter City, which it did under Chester Long when he was leader, I salute him, and it's a shame he's no longer alive, for the work he did in driving up the city, because the battle in Devon in those days was between Plymouth and Exeter. Exeter was the administrative centre and Plymouth was the driving workforce. But what he did was he took what was in Exeter and made it more office-based, he delivered more job opportunities. What he was unable to do, and partly to do with the restriction on the boundaries, was to deliver the housing that ought to have gone with it. There wasn't a big enough vision for the delivery for Exeter. And this is where I take absolute responsibility for when we're talking about Cranbrook and those Westcliss and parts of East Devon, they are known as West End of East Devon. They are not east of Exeter. They might geographically be east of Exeter, but when I was leader of East Devon District Council, we were firmly believing that we will deliver the growth for Exeter on our territory, because we would be collecting the council tax. Now, this is what matters at the end of the day, is the collection of the council tax to enable you to deliver the services you need to be able to deliver. And it has been very clear over the past few months of this Labour government, where their desire is for growth, and I support them in that. But sadly, I'm not seeing growth. It was pitifully small when we were at 0.1% growth. We are so close to recession, it is sad. But I know that there's huge opportunities. I was only out at the Science Park this morning, seeing that brand-new hotel being opened, and people, it's occupied with lots of people in it. There are fantastic things happening here, and we are ignoring it if we start bickering over a bit of municipal boundary. Those things can be easily sorted. What is important about our governance is that we keep focused on how we make sure that the vulnerable here in Devon receive the services. We know our education allocations are poor in financial terms. We are 47th, is it, in the whole of the country? It ought to be a lot higher, but we're not, because we are over-performing to some extent versus other councils, because we have good schools here in Devon. And this is what's important, we need to work on it. I absolutely applaud the officers and the hard work that they've done. It's very simple, councillor Bailey, if you want to know how much it costs, look at how we calculate the councillors' salary. It's a certain, oh, remission, it's not a remission, what's the word called? Allowance. Part of it is actual cash, the rest, we do it in charity.
You're running out of time, councillor Randall-Johnson.
Summing up, it's easy to sum it, it's very important that if we go into unitary, I applaud what we're doing here, because we're not making the decision for what is a very difficult area over our geographical area, but it is important that we keep services first.
Thank you. Councillor McGuff.
Thank you very much, Chair. I try and curb my language, obviously. What I can say, the paper before us today, unfortunately we can't make a decision, but I think the options that are in the paper at the moment are the only options available to the public of Devon. Now, this isn't a political statement from the leading team, Conservative team at all, it's a Labour government that insisted that we go into unitary authority, so that takes away anything political from the leading team here. We're trying to give the future residents of Devon the best option possible going forward. Now, my area, I represent Northern Westwellow and Apador, and predominantly Torridge is the most deprived area of all of Devon. Now, one of the options here, I'm really favourable for, because it ties us to Exeter, which is the economic driver force, in my opinion, of Devon. Now, I don't want to see Exeter go away on their own, because where I live, we want your money pot, we need access to your money pot. That's so important to us, and you're not going to have it all to yourself, no chance. We, we need it for our area, okay? So going forward, I support this paper before us. It's a shame we can't make a decision. I could get in and say I don't like the unitary at all, but something's going to change. The public want change, the public are going to get change, and that's not politically, they're going to get change in the way we spend their money. I love it today, some of these councillors are talking about the way we're spending money. I think that's great. It's a shame that some of you didn't do this quite a few years ago, waiting for I to sit in the council, because the waste we've had so much within the council, it would have probably put us in a better position. But, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. I, councillor Aides, followed by councillor James.
Thank you. I would like to bring up one or two comments that have been made within the council today, and answer a few of them. But to start, like my colleague councillor Adams, to thank all of the staff involved in going through this, because I realise what a huge extra burden at the moment it feels like until we get further on through the process, and that time used will be well used. And thank you so much for all the work that you're doing at the moment. You know how much the Labour councillors here appreciate the effort you put into everything you do. On page 22 in the report today, it has point seven and eight about capacity funding. Indeed, the minister has asked to find out what the cost is, is to, the cost that's being spent and the funds needed in order to come forward with proposals. So that has been asked for, so it will be recognised. I am really concerned that people in the, in the chamber are not thinking enough about residents. They're talking about reorganisation not being about residents. Well, I'm sorry, but the real reason for reorganisation, reorganisation and devolution is thinking about the residents. It's making sure that the areas, the unitaries that are decided upon do represent what the residents are needing and wanting. And it is different in coastal areas to rural areas and city areas. So it's really important that all of that is looked at and recognised. If we were to ask now, people are talking about One Devon and keeping Devon together, and that that's been the best that we've had, and it's been good. But I also know there's lots of conversations about how good it will be to have efficiencies. People already get confused between their county councillors and which area they cover, and their district councils and which area they cover. So that's not new. It's really important that we make sure that when Devon becomes unitaries, we're still Devon. I know that I and other councillors present in the room today work really hard for the whole of Devon. When you're on the scrutiny, you work for all people across Devon. When the unitaries are decided, we will work on smaller areas and be able to focus on those smaller areas, and I actually think that will be easier for us to do. Plus, the extra new towns and housing areas that have been put in in Devon, we do get complaints from residents about the way it's done, and the way the facilities aren't put in place, and the way that the district councils are expecting the residents in those, let's say more disparate areas away from the bigger towns and cities, are having to go to those bigger towns and cities for those facilities. So each unitary needs to start getting its act together, and when new housing is put in, making sure that the facilities are there and in place, and put in place by developers, so that people have close facilities. There is so much more we can do, there is so much to be gained by efficiencies, there is so much to be gained by the way this is being changed, but it is going to be difficult going through it. And I've heard a lot of people say how they really believe that not having district and county, but unitaries is going to bring efficiencies with it. Yes, I would agree, Chester Long was a great leader, but I also believe that Phil Byallack is as well, within the city of Exeter. Most councillors and most leaders have their residents' needs and interests at the centre of what they're trying to do, and that is still the case. So I don't look back to what was done before. I could name all sorts of things that have happened since he was the leader. While we had a different government in place, where it was made really difficult to create more housing and so forth, but we're back there again, making sure they're all becoming sustainable, social housing is well-
You're running out of time.
-done, our rule comes to an end. So I'm going to look forward to reorganisation and devolution, and I will support those involved in making sure efficiencies and the best is done for the people of Devon and the people within each unitary, so they have that area to feel that they identify with, because it's the right area surrounding them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Chair. I am prepared to support this report. Going to unitary authorities is going to be painful, and the hard work that is happening at the moment is probably only a tiny fraction of what is to come, and judging from the experience of other counties, it takes a long time, it's very painful, very hard work, and there's a, a lot of money can be lost in the process. So it is going to be difficult, but I think it's inevitable, because that's the way it's all going, that's the way other counties have gone, and that's the way the government are telling us we're going to have to go. And actually, I think in the end, it could be more efficient, for all the reasons that have been cited. So I am, and, but to, to support this report is not about, do we support going for unitaries because we got to. To, to support this report is really to say, I think this report includes all the viable options, and I think it probably does. And I, I appreciate that for my Labour colleagues, that, that's not what they want to hear, and I, I can understand their can, desire for a Greater Exeter, but I don't want to put a line around Exeter, I want it to be a big porous thing that is part of Devon, rather than a, a sort of island in the middle of Devon. So I, I don't see an option six of Greater Exeter, I think we're going to have to have one of, one, something like one of these five. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other speakers wishing to catch my eye. Neither have I been suggested at all that we have an amendment to this motion. So on the basis of that, I'm going to ask the leader to sum up this debate. I thank you all very much for your, what you've said. Leader to sum up, and I'm going to take a vote. Leader.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you again, also, members, for what I thought was some very thoughtful interventions, and I really appreciate that. I'm sort of going to go down through my list, so I hope I don't miss anything. Firstly, costs. Of course, there's cost of reorganisation, and that's very much what needs to be factored into what our final submission is in November. And part of the problems is, across the country, that people haven't been honest about those costs, and when it's two or three years, four years into the new unitary, they come a cropper, because it's actually cost them a lot more than they said it would. Also, I think we need to be fairly upfront. Government does say there might be some funding coming, in fact, in the reply to the letter that I sent to him, the minister implies that some funding may be announced in the future, but I wouldn't hold your breath, really, I think it'll be up to us in the end. Councillor Atkinson, boundary changes. And could I, could I say to my Exeter members, I fully appreciate where you're coming from, and if I was sat where you are, I'd probably be saying very similar things. But what officers have had to look at is actually- But what officers have had to look at is actually the criteria that government has set out. And I'm going to take you, you took me to page 17, so I'll take all members to page 17, and criteria for unitary local government. And A, I'm on page 15, A is there, that district area should be considered to be the building blocks for your proposals, it says. But where strong justification and complex boundary changes will be necessary, financial sustainability needs to be there as justification. And when we actually look at things, you know, and I'll take this on the nose, politically, we don't see Exeter standing on their own, it's justifiable financially. And later in the debate, the issues that were brought forward about Exeter in that, you know, very proud, we want to stand on our own, but I would say Exeter needs the residents of the rest of Devon to help support the residents of Exeter, because Exeter doesn't stand financially on its own. And I think, councillor, again, you said, you don't want a war around Exeter, you want Exeter to be part of a wider community. And that's why we are where we are. councillor Bailey, you mentioned obviously costs as well, and also, I have to emphasise, and it's something I didn't say in my opening remarks, is that through this process for this council, it does have to be business as usual. We have to continue to deliver to our residents across Devon. We have to continue to improve children's services, adult services, highways. We have to continue to work with our partners, although we may be having difficult conversations with them as far as unitary, on a day-to-day basis, as far as officer to officer, we have to continue to make those improvements. And that has to be factored in, and talking to the chief executive about this process over the coming years, we're both absolutely unanimous in terms of, it's our day job now, local government review, it's not something separate, it's part of our day job. But I do think you raise a good point about costs, and I think members do need to be informed of costs through the process, and I'll make sure the chief executive is right here listening to that, okay? councillor Leva, thank you very much for your comments. Again, costs mustn't be underestimated, which you absolutely said. And also, we need to look at council debt, because that's a big thing. I mean, here in Devon, I haven't got the exact figure in my head, so don't please quote me all over the press councillor McInnes said, but I think debt across the 11 local authorities is something like 2.2 billion, something like that. Now, if you're going to reorganise Devon in terms of unitaries, you have to work out how that debt's going to be carved up and how it's going to be paid for and serviced, and that is an absolutely key part of putting together a new unitary map across Devon, really is. councillor Treyle, thank you very much for your support, and you very much spoke, you know, we shouldn't be here talking from any political stance, we should be talking from the people of Devon. And that's exactly where I'm coming from. I haven't said an awful lot yet about towns and parishes. We've had a couple of really good meetings with DUC, the Association of Local Councils, and they've agreed to be part of a whole series of partners that will work with us in terms of putting together whatever unitaries come forward. And there definitely is an appetite in towns and parishes to actually take up some additional roles, but there's two key things there. Firstly, they must want to do it and not be told to do it. And secondly, it has to be funded. We can't expect our towns and parishes to take on additional roles without proper funding in place. And coming on to some other points that were raised, councillor Atkinson, urban not always appreciated in a large rural county. Now, my own view about identity, and I understand Exeter identifies with Exeter, and El Campton, we live in El Campton, identify with El Campton, and all over the rest of Devon it's that way. But there's no way that you can put together a unitary that has that sort of individual identity, because a unitary will always have to be of a size, it will have a series of identities. So to me, that's why the substructure underneath whatever unitary is so important, because the substructure needs to be there so towns and parishes, community groups, et cetera, can actually feed into a series of boards, hubs, or whatever you like to call it, across the unitary, so that local people do have a real identity. And this is where I think unitarisation in Devon could actually bring about better community engagement than we've currently got with a two-tier system. If we get the substructure right, and we make sure there's real engagement, and we actually work with our town and parishes and our community groups, and the locally-elected unitary councillors are sitting on hubs or boards across the county and making local decisions, that's the way to actually get the communities to really engage in local government, which we don't really have at the moment. councillor Chesterton, you asked about district boundaries, and you know, isn't it a bit silly to be using district boundaries, couldn't we come down? But at the moment, that is the guidance coming from government, and we have actually asked government, as you know, can we go down towards county divisions? And there's silence at the moment. I think as we go along, there will be some more clarity, but at the moment, there is silence. And public consultation is absolutely crucial to this, and that's one of the reasons why today, some people say, James, you know, you're pushing it in the long grass, you're not coming along and saying, I support this specific unitary solution. And it's not only because there's a county election, but it's because we must make sure that we're in a right position when we go out to engage with our residents and actually consult them properly, and we're not there yet because we don't have the data to actually support a specific option. But engagement with communities across Devon is absolutely crucial in this process between now and November. Sarah, you mentioned that map, and obviously, the wording is the wrong way round, and I should have mentioned that at the beginning, and I do apologise for that. The map was actually the wrong way round, and we changed the map, we forgot to change the wording, all right? So just an easy mistake. And you mentioned council tax base needs to be there to support the right unitary, and it's quite interesting, and that's why I come back to Exeter. I don't think a small unitary Exeter has a council tax base enough to be able to support the urban Exeter on its own. That's my personal view. And that's the view that I think will be brought out when we do get the data, but we don't actually have it yet, and that's why it's not one of the options. I think Exeter needs a wider area to work in partnership and support. councillor McGough, thank you very much for supporting the five options, and again, you fatally said what I just said, Exeter needs us. councillor Aves, I think you're quite right to recognise that Devon is a very diverse place, you know, coastal, urban, rural, and it's all about identity. But as I said earlier, I don't think that we can bring any unitary down to small enough to actually identify with local identity, because you just can't, it's not reality. But we do need support across Devon, and councillor, thank you very much, in saying, and I remember that, I don't want a war around Exeter, I think that's a really good one, I want it to be part of Devon. So, members, thank you very much for your very thoughtful contributions. This, obviously, you know, the election's coming, and as you all know, I won't be here, and I'll be watching with great interest, but I wanted to make sure today, the cabinet colleagues and officers of the council, that we leave this council, we've only got one more council left, I think, it is on the 24th of April, with a sound basis for the new council to actually pick up. And if I take you, I think it's to page 42, just to reassure any of you that this is all set in stone, on page 42 at the top, other potential options. Now, you can see there on page 42, to my colleagues in Exeter, if the new council really does feel that an Exeter confined unitary is one of the options they need to be looking at, then the new council has every opportunity to pick that up, or any other option that they think that isn't in front of us today. So it is wide open for the new council to pick up, and I formally, as I have said before, happy to move the recommendations before us, chair.
Okay. This debate has been moved, or the motion's been moved in secondary. Everybody in favour, please show. Thank you. Those against, please show. Thank you, it's clearly carried. Thank you very much. Mister Wilton.
Sorry, can we have that vote recorded, please?
Too late. You should have asked for it initially, before we took the vote, I'm sorry. What you can do is record your votes against and have it dropped in.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you all very much indeed for what has been a very interesting afternoon. Thank you.